Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Greenville City Council meeting on August 7, 2023. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over today's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Rick Smiley for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I've invited Rabbi Don Rose from Congregation Bet Shalom to deliver the invocation for us. Thank you.
Shalom.
Shalom.
Shalom. God of our fathers and our mothers, our sisters and brothers, today I know you remember the story of the town of Billings, Montana. How when the extremists threatened the Jewish community, thousands of the town's inhabitants put minorities in their window as a sign of solidarity with and protection for the Billings Jewish community. You remember how the attack was thereby averted. God, I thank and praise you for this city of Greenville and eastern northern Carolina, for I know that here the good citizens would similarly defend any minority or majority should they be likely lives threatened. I praise you, God, for the security and peace we enjoy here in Greenville, the attitude of mutual acceptance and respect we find here. We know, God, it is not through divine miracles this peace is achieved, but through the hard work and dedication, the wisdom and discernment that you have embedded within our elected officials, our first responders, officials, workers and citizens. We praise you, God, and ask that your grace may continue to fall upon this assembly so that they may continue to serve and lead with direction and discernment. We thank you for these public servants and place our trust in them. And one more thing, God, we know it is August, but if you could afford us one or two days of reasonable temperature and low humility, humidity, we should be eternally grateful as we are already eternally grateful, and may we all say, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rabbi, I thought you were going to get an astounding amen after the last part of that one. You got one from me. Thank you for coming. All right. Now we'll move on to the roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover has let us know she cannot attend this evening. Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Balf has let us know that he cannot attend this evening. Mayor Connolly, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I would request that the council consider adding a closed session for economic development purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels.
That was a move motion to approve the entire agenda as revised, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, it was.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers this evening.
Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. The amendment to the 2023 city council meeting schedule. Item number two is an ordinance revising the city code provisions regulating service, sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages on city property. Item three is landlord tenant waiver for Carolina Small Business Development Fund for Meg's Boutique N.C. LLC. Item four is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1,200 Davenport Street, known as parcel number 89469, and 1,204 Davenport Street, known as parcel 89468, to Habitat for Humanity of Pitt County. Item five is authorization to accept assistance to firefighters grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security to replace 30 self-contained breathing apparatus units. Item six is a budget ordinance amendment and reimbursement resolution for Greenville Utilities Commission's electric capital projects budget for the 1,200 MVA point of delivery substation transformer. Item seven is a request by the police department to utilize asset forfeiture funds. Item eight is a surface agreement with Sound Thinking, Inc., parent company for ShotSpotter. Item nine is a resolution approving the execution of a municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for fiscal year '24 planning grant, 5303 planning grant funds. Item number 10 is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Pitt County, Pitt County area transit system related to providing paratransit transportation services within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Greenville. Item 11 is a contract with Tar Hill Billing Services, Inc., doing business as Congleton Billing for EMS Billing and Collection Services. Item 12 is a change order number one for the 2023 stormwater repairs project. Item 13 is a resolution declaring a special emergency for the temporary repair of the existing metal pipe culvert system from Skinnerd Street through the Public Works facility at Beatty Street. And item 14 are various tax refunds greater than $1,000.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to pull, if you don't mind, just for a brief discussion, items two, four, and 13.
Two, four.
Yes, ma'am.
Need to approve the remaining items.
Second.
May I make a point of clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
I think Madam Manager said in item number six, 1,200, in the, in the agenda says...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 120.
120. I wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
All right.
Move. Second, Councilmember Smiley's motion.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We'll move on to item number two. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is an ordinance revising the city code provisions regulating service sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages on city property. City Attorney McGirt has the presentation.
Good evening.
I'm Emmanuel McGirt, City Attorney, joined by Assistant City Attorney Mr. Donald Phillips. Just paraphrasing, this item is dealing with code amendments regarding sale of alcohol on city property. On June the 8th of 2023, council requested an update on whether the city would allow mixed beverage sales at the Town Common and whether that was legally authorized. And the answer is yes, the city policy already allows that if the lessee enters a lease with the city and obtains an ABC permit. After that research was done, the city manager's office requested amendments to the city code for the sale of alcohol on city properties. And so the item before you, it clarifies the city property where alcohol is allowed to be sold and consumed. It adds Five Points Plaza and Guy Smith Stadium. Already, we are doing alcohol sales at Five Points during Free Boot Fridays, but there was nothing in the code regarding Five Points. We're adding Guy Smith Stadium because the city has entered into an agreement with Capital Broadcasting to host baseball games at Guy Smith, starting in the spring of 2024, and the agreement allows Capital Broadcasting to have an ABC permit. The ordinance also expands the definition of Town Common to include portions of First Street when a temporary street closure permit is obtained. And the ordinance, it identifies which city properties allow the sale of beer and unfortified wine and which properties allow the sale of liquor or mixed beverages as well. Presently, the way the code is written, any type of alcoholic beverage could be sold on city properties. So it's actually restricting alcohol sales in that sense. It repeals the case of policy on the sale of alcohol at Town Common in Wildwood and gives that authority to the manager to adopt in the policy establishing rules for the sale of alcohol. Now presently, this chart shows you where alcohol sales, the property where alcohol sales are allowed and what types of beverages can be sold at those, at each of those properties. Goes from the City Golf Course, course Bradford Creek, to the Convention Center, et cetera, all of those properties. Now, if you look toward the bottom of this chart, it says, the code says, any other city-owned property. So it's written so broadly that the manager, or the council could authorize alcohol sales at any city-owned property and also any public street or sidewalk which is temporarily closed. Now, this revision, the revision and the proposed update, if you look at the bottom, it no longer says, the code no longer allows property to be sold at any city property. And it also no longer allows alcohol to be sold on any public street if there's a street closure. It just says public streets in the downtown area, and there's a map which defines the downtown area. So if you look at this chart, it shows where malt beverages can be sold in the, every, in that first column where you have check marks, and it shows where fortified wine can be sold on city property. It strikes city, mixed beverages sales at Nature Park, Perkins, CM Epps, and buildings leased for two years or, or more. So, so that is, that is the proposal, and we're here to answer any questions.
So, thank you very much for this. One of the reasons I wanted just a little bit of discussion of this is because this is going to result in some changes that people are going to notice, and I thought it was, I thought it would be important to kind of talk about what this means. It looks like city ordinance has already allowed alcohol sales, including liquor, not just beer and wine, on all city properties. Is that right?
That's right.
And so what we're doing here is we are actually sort of, I guess you'd say, telescoping where that can happen.
Clarifying and, clarifying it, limiting where it can happen, but in a sense, there's an expansion in that we're including Five Points Plaza and Guy Smith Stadium for the reasons that we just stated.
Now, just looking at the places that are now excluded, is there, could they be included in a future time if, if someone wanted to do that, the council wanted to do that?
Yeah, the council could always amend its code.
And I'm curious about why some of these are, are excluded. I guess because that, that we don't see a future events or future, I guess, public demand for alcohol in those locations?
I guess it's more of a regulatory decision, policy call. You know, clearly where you have, you allow all types of alcoholic beverages, you have a lot of foot traffic at the Town Common, at the Convention Center, so we clearly want all types of beverages to be sold, but the manager's office wanted to restrict it to those areas, to prohibit it in those areas where you see the red X's.
Okay. All right. Super. That's all of my questions, but just to, oh, okay, yeah, go right ahead, sorry. Yeah, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Just in reference to the ABC permit and city approval, will the ABC permit have to come first before the city will approve it?
Yes, they have to show proof of an ABC permit that's required, so.
Okay. Do you know the timeframe for obtaining those?
You want to jump in here, Mr. Phillips?
So a couple of things. Typically, we mostly see the special one-time permit, and so the lease will be done with the applicant, and so that would have to be done, they would have to get that permission prior to the ABC permit being issued.
Okay.
And that's part of the package from the ABC commission that goes to the commission. And so once the ABC commission then issues the permit, we typically request and require a copy of that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Want to make a motion to approve? Or I can.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item four is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1,200 Davenport Street and 1,204 Davenport Street to Habitat for Humanity of Pitt County and staff. Director of Neighborhood and Business Services, Tiana Bearman, is available for questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a brief background, in May, Habitat for Humanity reached out to the city expressing, expressing interest in developing some affordable housing on two city-owned lots. In the past five years, the city's partnered with Habitat to provide three, three affordable units for first-time, low and moderate income buyers. We've layered our partnership to include both the property, the, the land for the development, some building or material expenses through our subrecipient program, and then down payment assistance. So this would be consistent with the nature of our partnership for the past five years. So they're looking to complete units four and five.
Just one question. Thank you very much for that information. This is really great. Were there houses previously on these lots, or have they been just basically empty lots?
There were houses on these lots, I'd say at least a decade or so ago, but they've been vacant for some time. The past three units that were developed were in the Lincoln Park area. These are slightly outside of that area, but still similar situations they were once developed.
Thank you very much for that update, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We'll move on to lucky number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 13 is a resolution declaring a special emergency for the temporary repair of the existing metal pipe culvert system from Skinnerd Street through the Public Works facility at Beatty Street. Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, is available to answer questions.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Mulligan, this is just a follow-up. This is the pipe, the, the pipe, the project that we've been talking about that is going to replace that, that big pipe right in front of Public Works.
This is the 84-inch pipe that is bisecting the, on the southern part of Public Works that goes between streets and fleet and in front of the fuel station, in front of the admin building and the exit of Public Works.
And this is really important because if it, if it fails, everything collapses inward.
We would not want it to fail.
We do not want that. And the reason that, I guess my question is, this special emergency for temporary repair, are we doing something other than what we've been discussing? Is there going to be some kind of additional propping up, or does it just kind of expedite the, the repair that's already planned?
The repair that's planned is the replacement of the metal pipe. So the metal pipe is deteriorating, was deteriorating rapidly due to some of the acidic conditions of the soil, as well as some of the pressures from the existing stormwater flow. And so we needed to stabilize this pipe prior to the replacement.
Got it.
And just to, just to clarify, this action would actually ratify the emergency purchase of those efforts to stabilize the pipe. Then we'll go, move forward with the, with the, the bidding out of a contractor to do the full replacement.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. That is, that answers my question completely, and I make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We'll move on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start a presentation from our Pitt Greenville Airport Authority. I'll call forward John Banks, the Chair of the Airport Commission, as well as Bill Hopper, who is the Director of the Airport Commission. Gentlemen?
Hey, Bill. Come to the staff.
Must be in the front row.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the, the mayor and the city council for inviting me to this, and also appreciation to Councilman Robinson for his participation on the Airport Authority Board. We'll go ahead and get started. We have, this is just an update, our annual update to the city council on the Pitt Greenville Airport. And we'll just kind of start with a little overview on the airport. We have 19 full-time employees and one part-time employee. We have eight Airport Authority Board members. Our law enforcement is provided by Pitt County Sheriff's Department. We have American Airlines with connecting hub in Charlotte, and I'm happy to say that next month, we're going to get one additional flight. The early morning flight to Charlotte is, is going to be going out at about 5:10 in the morning, and will return about 11 o'clock at night. So for those business travelers, we are going to have that overnight flight back, which is going to be very helpful. Transportation Security Administration is also a part of our, our facility. We have rental cars, as well as the first-class bistro and restaurant. And we're also, probably in about a week, we're going to have our conference room down there. It's, it's going to be about 50 people capacity right next door to the restaurant, and we're going to also be lending that out for events as well. This just kind of goes into operations. First of all, just with the employment and de-employment, if you look at 2019, you're going to notice that we were close to 55,000 employments, and then, of course, during the pandemic, really most of what you see there is probably about in March. Then in 2021, we start picking up a little bit, and we, we've gone down to, with just two flights a day, that's actually, when you compare that to the flights that we had with five a day in 2019, where we're having pretty good passenger loads. However, you know, only having two flights a day does impact the, the passenger numbers. So hopefully those passenger numbers will go up once we, we get that third flight in. This just shows non-stop flights. If you look at the three, the Washington, Idaho, and New Mexico, that just shows you where people are flying non-stop from Pitt Greenville Airport. So this, this is a nice way of showing how important Pitt Greenville is to the, to the local community. These are people that are coming to and from Greenville, conducting business in Greenville, and so it's just something that, that I think is a good visual of, of what we do there. I'll get into the economic impact study. This was done back last fall by the state of North Carolina. It's done every two years, and it shows that, first of all, for airports in general in the state, it's $72 billion economic impact, 330,000 jobs, $23 billion in personal income, and 3.7 billion in tax revenue. And this just shows all the public airports, there's 72 public airports in, in the state of North Carolina. 10 of them are commercial service airports, which includes Pitt Greenville. Now, just Pitt Greenville in general was shown to impact 1,225 jobs, and it's 84, 84 million, $580,000 in personal income. The state local taxes is, is a little over 14 million, and we're just shy of $267,000 in economic output. And this right here, I, I just want to kind of go over the importance of, of business diversity at the airport. If you look at 2019, you'll notice that, that the airline was about 35%, so everything is kind of broken out fairly even. And then in '21, you'll notice during the pandemic, we were, it was corporate aircraft, that's what kept us going. So the, the importance of diversity at, at, at the airport is very important in that it's, it's the corporate aircraft that are kind of helping us get through the, the hard times. And then, of course, now we're starting to catch back up with the, with the airline side if you look in 2022. This just goes over, we do have five new corporate hangars that we've opened up. We've got one that is presently leased out and two where we're just have a few more details to work out to get those rented out, and have no doubt that, you know, that we'll be renting the other two out soon. Probably in October, we're going to start construction on two more corporate hangars. So right now, we have four 13,000 square foot hangars, which basically any corporate aircraft that you can build, you can put in that hangar. And then, of course, the larger aircraft will be able to fit in the two new ones that will be starting this fall. This shows in, and the additional airline would be to growth. If you can see, it, what it does is, if you look right now with just the seven corporate hangars, you'll notice that the business side is, is considerably a, a majority of the, the revenue that we began at the airport. However, you throw in another airline, and now it's about a third. So this is, this just shows you the importance of, of diversifying what type of activity we have there. Just kind of go into the, the different areas. We just don't have just the area around the terminal building. This just shows you other areas that we have available around the airport. We have 90 acres to the north, which could be for industrial, and then you notice we have two 24-acre parcels where we could possibly do some more aviation activity. This just getting into the, the air service development, you know, the, you know, activity at the airport. We do work very hard in trying to, you know, get additional air service. We do have, we do continue to have the grant from the federal government, which we got, I think, about a week before the pandemic kind of really hit, and so that really had an impact on us, but we continue to work. As, as, in fact, next week, I'll be going out to, to meet with some airlines to try to, to promote Pitt Greenville. The yellow portion on this is what I consider to be our, our true catchment area. If you look there, they have the 30-minute drive, 60-minute drive, and 90-minute drive. That's just the drive from the airport. However, if you go out to the west towards Raleigh, of course, it's probably only going to be about 30 to 45 minutes of, of, of what might, Greenville might attract. However, you go to the east, you could probably go as long as two hours out east, and, and Greenville would be the closest airport. This just gives you a nice depiction of, of the connections. If, right, this is one-stop connections through Charlotte, and this kind of gives you an idea of, of what type of, of, you know, opportunities there are for flying out of Greenville with only one stop. And then this, I do have the, I mentioned the grant earlier that we have. If we're able to succeed with that grant, this just shows you just what one more airport, the addition of one-stop service that we could get through Greenville. And then last, I just, I'll open up to John Banks.
Good evening. I'm John Banks.
I'm John Banks. I'm the chairman of the Airport Commission this year authority. I've got a few facts that we, that Councilmember Robinson and Mayor Connolly know because both he serves and he did serve on the board. I'm just going to read down a couple of things that, factoids that you probably don't know. You might enjoy hearing. Former chairman Donald Taylor put the PGV airports the gateway to eastern North Carolina, which means commerce, a lot of commerce comes through here, way east of here. People drive here to do business. Corporate executives fly here to do jobs. And tourism is an economic driver. Capital projects, the last six years, we spent thirty million dollars in the last six years, updating runways, facilities, taxiways. That money came from federal and state grants. We had to match ten percent, and we've been very fortunate to have the cash flow to do that. Some of these are mandated by FAA and state DOT. Like some of the mandates y'all get from your budget. You have to match some things up once the budget goes out. See. Airplanes that are based in Greenville, the reason we push corporate aircraft, they bring taxes. They bring jobs. And they don't use any highways, schools, any services outside the airport. You get property taxes with not any use for any other things. So that's, that doesn't take any budget away from city and county, so that's a great thing for us. And when Bill mentioned the COVID, when COVID came, we got a grant for twenty million dollars. A lot of the airports, I think Bill can testify to this, they use those airports in frivolous ways pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah, for runway improvements, those are.
We took ten million and built five hangars, which he was mentioning. And we also took ten million and put back for operations. Now, the airport didn't make money. We're not a hub of making any kind of huge profits. We've lost money for years. We've been lucky to break even a couple of those times. But without five flights a day, we go in the hole. We go in the hole, eighty thousand dollars a month. So this COVID money literally saved our bacon. We were in a bad way. We've taken that money. We have now two million left out of that fund we put back. For the next two years, this will fill the gaps in our budget, which was a blessing for us. Several years back, and City Manager, we all can remember this, our books were not as nice and neat as we needed them. Mayor, you remember those days? Well, we recruited CPA to work on our board. He's got them down to the dime. And I'm sure Councilmember Robinson can tell you that we have a good financial reporting venue. He's a business guy, not just a lawyer. So he's wanted to pound the desk if it's not quite right, which I think y'all.
I'll take that in a good kind of way.
It's a good way. He asked, he asked some really good questions, and we have some nice debate. And Mayor Connolly is kind of smirking over there that we make million-dollar judgments and decisions usually on a monthly basis, don't we? And they affect the community, affect the airport. It's a great thing because we get things done. We talk about it a little bit. And sometimes we tell Bill to go back and do his homework again because we have questions and usually we have a pretty good vote on those things. Am I right, Councilmember?
You are right.
But they're lively sometimes, but we get to the bottom of it. When Eric Clark was the chairman on the board, Eric's a banker. And all bankers like to have their nice books and nice order. It took us years to get those books in order. No money was lost, but it was too many spreadsheets without any kind of formal accounting, formal accounting software. We changed that. Thank you, Terry Monday CPA, for giving us that time and not billing us. It was great. Now, I slur and mumble because my mother's from here, my father's from the mountains, so I'm kind of messed up. So if you missed something here, raise your hand. I'll do it again. Let's see. Now, for the next five years, we're looking at thirty-seven million, maybe forty-something million dollars in additional funding that's going to be needed. Runways, runway repaving. We need to build a new firehouse and general aviation terminal, which we can't get federal funding for, so we've got to find the money for that. And so much coming in from PFC passenger facility charges, which everybody pays on a ticket when you fly on the airplane. We use that to fill the gaps on the ten percent from the federal and state. So you're looking at over a period of ten years, sixty-plus million dollars is put in that airport. And that, a lot of jobs and revenues created for that, local construction jobs and other jobs. Now, the city and county were very gracious seven years ago when they would help us share in some property taxes to help us replenish our bank account before hangars were built. I think Mayor Connolly was around at that time. That has worked out great. We have one point eight million dollars in the bank that we, Bill had just discussed. The two new hangars we're building, that money is rolled back over again to build two more hangars. Now, hangars are not going to get us out of our debt. Rents are nice, but we've got to continue to get into the airline or get five flights a day. Parking, fuel, and rents from the airlines is what pays the majority of our revenues. Now, Councilman Smiley's been gracious enough to help us. We knew some people on the board, get a second chance to come back and serve on the board again. It takes a year. And I think the mayor and Councilmember Robinson can tell you, you just don't walk in there and make decisions that day. You've got a lot to learn, all the acronyms for different words. It takes you a while to be productive, and they'll scratch their head and go, what are you talking about? And it takes a while to know how you do your grants, what you can and can't do. And then we have two lawyers on our board. Gets to be interesting sometimes to talk about the theories behind the grants and stuff. And they have to learn just like the rest of us. But it's a board you should be proud of. We look at the interest of the city, the county, and the region. And we work hard to fulfill the dreams of the planners and the people that want the airport to be what it best can be. Now, any questions?
Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was super interesting and a very good update. At present, there are two flights a day, and you're now looking, you're looking soon to add that third one.
Yeah, starting September seventh, there'll be an early morning flight and a late night flight.
Now, we used to have five.
Yeah.
Constant turning. That, if you look at our parking fees, the parking and the fuel in the rental for that airline really kept us close to breaking even all these years. And after, we got a really, we do go, Bill goes at least twice a year. I've been to probably twenty meetings over the last ten years or so to talk to airlines. You can talk to them, but once they say yes, it takes a year before they can gear up, get the FAA to approve it, et cetera, et cetera. And we were this close to getting an airline before COVID. In fact, we were in Chicago.
We were in Chicago, and a week later, in fact, they were talking about COVID with China back then.
And that's really slowed the progress of getting, they need more pilots. They can't get pilots. They need more equipment. And if you look at the numbers, like the airlines are making a nice profit. Well, because everybody's back flying again. And, you know, they don't have enough staff to, they retired so many during COVID, they can't catch up. It's going to be a problem for several years to come. But we're hopeful we can eventually get another airline here, give us more destinations and more ability to have choices for our public. More questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you for what you guys do. I know it's incredibly tough serving on the board. You know, I don't think the vast majority of people realize how tough it is to drive revenue at the airport. And there's only a few sources that you had mentioned. But I will say that when I go out throughout the community, we talk about economic development, probably the number one thing that always gets mentioned is the airport, right? It's the centerpiece of the discussion, and so many different businesses that are looking to potentially come here or make expansion here, they always talk about general aviation. So being able to have another airline would be great. I know that you've worked very hard on that. And I know how close we were right when COVID hit to potentially having another airline here at the airport. So anything that you can do, anything that we can do to help out to be able to accomplish that mission and be able to bring another airline would be great. I know it's, I know it's tough. It's not one of those things that you can just go up there and say, okay, we've got a grant, you know, come here. John, you had mentioned too about the lack of pilots, you know. That's a problem that every airline is having right now. And everyone that you go in front of, you've got to convince them why PGV is the best place that they should have another airline or have another hub at that they can provide service. So I know how hard you're working, but I appreciate all that you guys are doing.
Thank you. And also, the university started back maybe five years ago, flying back out of Greenville, which is a great thing. We get our charters coming in and going out. That brings revenue and brings tourism in because those home games, sometimes we have a ramp full of jets. From these alumni come in to the visiting team and for our team. And one thing that people don't realize, ECU Health, formerly Viden, they fly medical people and they fly organs in and out every week. We'll have jets coming in bringing organs in.
We have five a night for organ transplant.
So it's really, it's kind of like a silent operation. Most people don't know anything about what goes on out there. And when you get on the board, it's not what you think. And you come on and say, I can, I can make things happen. Well, Councilman Robinson knows, and you knows, it takes a while to get things going. But we're constantly working at it.
And I think, correct me if I'm right, wrong on this, but I think when they started to cut back some of the flights that are being offered at PGV, they brought in larger aircraft, right? So they would still be able to have a larger capacity. So it's not that they just eliminated it, which, I mean, of course, we all want to have five flights out there. But they did bring in some larger aircrafts. So from a capacity standpoint, they've got more people that can fly out on each flight.
After the first time, we have first-class service.
There you go.
They've gone back to the smaller ones now with the three a day, but we were at first-class service for a while.
There you go.
It's a challenge. And, you know, you come out there and ten minutes later, you're at the gate. It's, it's a beautiful thing, but like every small place, you've got to keep pushing and pushing to get what you want and what you need. And we need more flights, and we need another airline.
We need to talk to our friends at American and Charlotte, too. We have a few, we have a few issues there, too. That's, that's out of your, that's out of your, out of your jurisdiction, so.
We talk to them.
We're constantly talking to them. And Bill's talking about routes, service, dependability, all those issues come up, and they're constantly talking about it.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
John and Bill, I want to say I publicly thank you for your service. And been on there now, you know, about a year, I see your dedication and how you're trying to spin ways to make more money and service the citizens of Greenville. And at the same time, try to look at the budget and be mindful of that. And we have had some lively debates, and I appreciate those. And that just shows the compassion you guys are trying to execute out there and do the best you can for the citizens of Greenville. And I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to working with you next year.
We don't normally do things in a straight era, but we get there.
We get it done.
We get it done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Madam Major?
Thanks. I would request that Kevin Faison, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, come forward for a presentation to the council. Mr. Faison?
Hello, Mayor, Council. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good, all right.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you guys. My last presentation was in October, so it's not quite a year. Not quite sure how we fell in this little nine, ten-month gap. But I.
We were so excited. We didn't want to wait the whole year to see it.
I guess my last.
See you again in December, just say that.
My last official meeting for you guys, as I'll be stepping down at the end of the month.
Sorry to hear that.
I had a good time.
That's good.
It was a good run.
That's good.
Two years. So the planning and zoning's main role is to advise the board and the council on zoning and tax amendments. The commission also makes final decisions on subdivision plots. Like I said, our last presentation was in October, so we're going to move forward to our next slide. As you'll see, the bulk of our rezonance for this time period were single-family and multifamily projects. One of the real notable projects we had was rezoning the old GUC property into an industrial zone. The updated locations are indicated by the red dots on the map. These rezonances were scattered throughout the city, and this year's and previous years are also listed. As you'll see on our next slide, what everybody loves is getting to the money. With exception of the fiscal year of 2021, we've been able to have about five hundred million dollars a year of growth through our tax base. So that's excellent, like, you know, we, as a city, you know, that's how we make our money. And we've been doing an excellent job of growing through the different things for planning and zoning. The commissions makes final decisions on subdivision plots. The bulk of our plots for family subdivisions and the updated plots indicated by the red dots for previous years shown also. So. And now on to, this graph represents the tax value of the previous slide and the 2022 updates. So as you see, we continue to grow, had a little bit of a slump, but we are still making progress. One of our major projects for this year was Langston West, which is going to have sixty-two single-family developments when it's fully built out. And it's going to bring approximately seventeen million dollars in tax value. So those are just a few highlights from what we've done in the last nine months. Are there any questions or anything I can expand on?
Any questions for Mr. Faison?
Again, thank you for your service. We appreciate all that you've done. I hate to hear that you're getting off the board, but I know you've served for a while, and we appreciate that. And hopefully, you'll get to jump into another board and stay involved.
I just got an interest in the Aviation Board.
There you go. There you go. Maybe that's next.
Kevin. Thank you for your service on the Planning and Zoning Board.
All right, Madam Major, our next item?
Item sixteen is the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number One to the Twenty-three Twenty-four City of Greenville Budget involving the Capital Revenue Grant Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, the Donations Fund, and the Occupancy Tax Fund. Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has the presentation. Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Budget Amendment Number One. Budget Amendment One includes adjustments to the following funds: the General Fund, the Transit Fund, the Fleet Fund, Sanitation, Stormwater, Health Insurance, the Vehicle Replacement Fund, the Grant Special Revenue Fund, the Facilities Improvement Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, the Wreck and Parks and Public Works Capital Projects Fund, as well as the Community Development Capital Projects Fund, the Donations Fund, and the Occupancy Tax Fund. So I think just about all of our funds. Breakdown of the amendments. We are recognizing prior fiscal year 2022, 2023 encumbrances and carryovers in the city's operating funds. It's an increase to all of our city operating funds by a total of about nine point four million dollars. We are recognizing transfers budgeted in the General Fund for the pavement management program and the streetlights and cameras program, as well as appropriating fund balance for additional traffic safety projects. That's an increase of three point two five million dollars. We are recognizing funding received from Greenville Utilities for the Energy Assistance Program. It's an increase in the Community Development Capital Projects Fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are recognizing funding received within the donations line for the Police Department. It's an increase in the donations fund of a little over sixteen thousand dollars. Recognizing grant funds received within the Transit Fund for the Fleet Service Bay Expansion. It's an increase in the Transit Fund of a little over a million dollars. We're also recognizing additional grant funds within the Transit Fund for the purchase of additional bus shelters, an increase in the Transit Fund of about six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We are recognizing funds received in the Special Revenue Grant Fund for the Love of Sea Turtle Program at River Park North, an increase in the Special Revenue Fund of about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We are appropriating occupancy tax reserves within the Occupancy Tax Fund for a sports complex feasibility study, an increase of fifty-eight thousand dollars. We are appropriating federal forfeiture funds as presented to council during the June fifth and August seventh meeting, an increase in the General Fund of about five thousand dollars. And as a result of the amendments, this increases the city's operating ordinance to a hundred and seventy-one point six million dollars. And staff recommends approval of the operating fund ordinance, the capital project fund ordinance, the engineering capital projects fund ordinance, the donations fund ordinance, and the special revenue fund ordinance. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We'll now move on to the review of the August tenth, two thousand twenty-three City Council agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. On August tenth, the City Council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn?
I almost had someone, but I'm going to need to continue that again.
Okay, all right. Board of Adjustment, Councilmember Smiley?
Is that, was that person eligible for reappointment?
No.
Okay, that's what I think. I'll continue.
Okay. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to plan to nominate Kristi Dixon.
Okay. The Greenville Utilities Commission, the first appointment is for Mayor Connolly.
Still working on that.
Okay. Next, we've got one more seat up there for Councilmember Daniels.
I intend to appoint Ms. Wanda Carr.
Okay. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Daniels?
I intend to appoint Dr. Denard.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. I think Mayor Pro Tem Glover might have a couple of nominations that she'd appreciate you all handling for her Thursday, but I'll get those names and send those out. Multimodal Transportation Commission, Councilmember Robinson?
I was not attending the last meeting. I'd like to continue that to try and find a replacement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the Airport Authority. Councilmember Smiley?
Trying to nominate Mark Porter.
All right. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Councilmember Smiley, you have two city appointments, or excuse me, one city appointment that is eligible for reappointment and two county appointments that need a recommendation.
So I'm reappointing, I intend to reappoint the eligible candidate. And I think we're waiting for the county to give us.
No, we would make that recommendation, and then they would formally appoint.
I will have names for you on Thursday.
Okay.
I think it, I think it's the people that are there are eligible for reappointment.
Yeah, they are eligible, yes, yes, sir. Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two seats up there. First is Councilmember Blackburn?
I'm, I'm going to nominate Zach Woodmansey.
Okay. The next seat is for Councilmember Smiley, and that's for Hat Maxwell's seat. He is no longer eligible to serve.
And I'm still working on a name for that.
Okay. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee, and that is for Mayor Pro Tem Glover. We'll check with her later. And finally, is also the Youth Council. That's also for Mayor Pro Tem Glover. And we do have one more appoint. Um, and we do have one more appointment, Madam Manager, and that would be for the Pitt County Human Relations Commission, and, uh, that is open for any one of you to make a recommendation nomination.
Who's on it right now?
Uh, it's currently vacant. Um, but.
Who was on it?
Me.
Thank you. Have mercy, thank you.
I know you, yeah. But you were sitting there before you were on council.
So formally, Councilmember Daniels, um, and let's see, whoever is appointed would finish out the remainder of that term, which expires twenty twenty-five. Again, it's wide open to anybody, does not have to be an elected official or staff.
I know somebody that might have some free time on their hands here pretty soon, but I'll think about that.
Okay. And that concludes the appointments, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Valerie.
Okay. Now, um, at the August tenth meeting, the council will also hold various public hearings, which will include an ordinance to annex Brook Hollow, Section Five, Phases One A and Two, involving thirteen point seven acres located along the northern right-of-way of Dickinson Avenue Extension and at the current terminus of Dorset Drive. Item four is an ordinance to annex Covington Downs Subdivision, Lot Three, Block B, property involving four point six five acres located between Turnberry Drive and Smithwick Drive and two hundred and fifty feet east of, east of Arlington, east of East Arlington Boulevard. Item five is an ordinance to annex Fairfield Subdivision, Section Two, Lot Twelve, property involving three point three five three acres located along the northeastern corner of the intersection of Davenport Farm Road and Garnet Way. Item six is an ordinance to annex GCO Properties LLC, involving point nine five acres located two hundred and twenty-five feet south of Marine Drive and three hundred and fifty feet east of northeast Greenville Boulevard. Item seven is an ordinance requested by Redeeming Faith International Ministries, Inc., to rezone five point eight four acres located along the northern right-of-way of McGregor Downs Road and west of Bee's Barbecue Road for medical residential, single-family to R Six Residential. Item eight is an ordinance requested by Elliott Sidewalk Communities to increase density standards for the mixed-use institutional district from a limit of no more than eight multifamily units per acre to allowing multifamily units with a minimum habitable floor area per unit of no more than four hundred square feet for one-bedroom unit and five hundred square feet for two or more bedroom units. Ordinance, item number nine is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance to delete the five hundred-foot separation requirement from a bar to another bar, except in the bar twenty-two eligible area. Item ten is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance to add a microbrewery and a microdistillery as a special use to the following districts, commercial downtown fringe, general commercial, heavy commercial, and add microdistillery to a use, to it, as a permitted use and the mixed-use institutional district. Item eleven is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the zoning ordinance to combine two uses and associated standards, wine and craft beer shop and wine, craft beer, and keg shop, to create and establish the use and associate standards for a wine and beer store. Item twelve is a resolution approving Amendment Number Three to an Economic Development Agreement with Grover Gaming, Inc. and Vanilla Games, Inc. Item thirteen is an application to receive funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Those are the public hearings. The council will also consider two other items. One is the discussion of a balloon, uh, balloon releases within the city limits of Greenville, and item fifteen is a discussion of supporting the North Carolina Department of Transportation's naming of the Southwest Bypass and order of former Senator Tom Tatt. That is a meeting for August the tenth.
I missed a couple of them. Did you give them any?
Please don't make me.
What was the middle thing?
Just do them all again.
Was it East, East, East Tenth Street?
All right, now, the most anticipated one of the night, the city manager's report.
Um, Mayor, I have no report.
All right, comments from the mayor and the city council, Councilmember Robinson?
Um, number one, uh, congratulations to the Jackie Robinson Baseball League. Their end-of-season trophy presentation is on the thirteenth at three o'clock at Thomas Foreign Park, and the GHA, GHA Stars and the Pal Barons are co-champions, and they're known for making young men on and off the field. So if you can join them at the trophy presentation, that would be awesome. Mind everybody to go out and get some world-class softball entertainment at Greenville Little League, uh, on Elm Street. Go enjoy that. It's going to be some phenomenal, uh, softball by some phenomenal young ladies playing that sport. And I think on Wednesday, we have professional softball coming into town, and that's another phenomenon to go watch. And I would encourage everybody, we're supposed to have some really hot weather and heat in there, so if you're outside exercising or just walking around or working, be very careful and hydrate well, uh, to protect yourself. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to sort of dovetail with Councilmember Robinson's discussion of the Little League Softball World Series, kind of more from outside of what actually happens inside Stelling Stadium. First of all, just congratulations to all these young players who've come and for whom this is such an important time. I wanted to thank and congratulate our city staff for the amazing work they've done so that Greenville truly presents itself in the best possible light, as a true destination, as a true, a, a, a place that has a true identity and a very welcoming identity at that. I was out running on Sunday morning before really anything had gotten started, and I was watching all the people coming in from everywhere. Our staff has placed signs all along the Greenway, there's signs along our streets, there's banners, we had food trucks. Everybody that I saw coming in had a smile on their face. It was just such an atmosphere. They were delighted to be here in Greenville, and we were extending this welcome to them that they felt. It was just a wonderful sense of warmth throughout that whole area, and I just want to, of course, welcome all the people who are coming to Greenville and hope you enjoy your stay here. And then to our city staff, all the departments, I understand, were involved. Of course, Recreation and Parks was heavily involved, but all our city departments who made Greenville such a welcoming place for this event, and it really has been a wonderful event for all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels?
I would like to actually wish my daughter Ashley and her husband a happy anniversary. Um, they're in Jamaica without me, but that's okay. And, um, I do encourage everyone to, um, to, um, come to the Jackie Robinson Year-In Event this Sunday. The children do need our support, and that is something that's very important. I would also like to congratulate our attorney, Mr. McGirt, on his appointment as president of the North Carolina.
President.
President, yes. Um, Association of Municipal Attorneys. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'll be quick.
I want to reiterate what the council members have said about the Jackie Robinson League. Congratulations, winners, please, if you get an opportunity, come out to the celebration this weekend. Um, also, congratulations to our local girls from the Pitt County Girl Softball League that's playing in the World Series. This is the second year in a row that we've had a team that's participated in it. Last year, the team that was in it, uh, actually won the state of North Carolina, and this year, the team lost in the, the tournament, and then they went down to the southeast and represented the, the state of North Carolina in the southeast tournament and won that, and that's why they're in it. Last night, they played, and they played very, very well, uh, all the way up till the fifth inning, and it just became too much, but they played against Texas, which was the winner of the twenty twenty-two, uh, Little League Softball World Series, and they returned nine players on that Texas team. So as you can imagine, they're pretty stacked. Uh, but our team played very well last night. Um, the girls showed a lot of heart, uh, had some tough breaks out there, but they play again on tomorrow at seven PM, and I believe the game is on ESPN Two. Uh, but come out and support them. Just because they lost the first game doesn't mean that they're not in this for the long haul. They've got lots and lots of games ahead of them. They need our support. Uh, they've got an opportunity to go pretty far in this tournament. I mean, they played against a team, I was just looking at some of the scores today, they played against Texas. Texas went on and beat the West Region Champion today, eleven to nothing. So, uh, our girls have a really good team this year. Make sure you come out and support them throughout the tournament. It's an awesome, awesome event for our city. Uh, it's a great way for us to display how great our community is, and I've been fortunate, uh, throughout this weekend, uh, to be able to talk to some of the visitors that have been there, and they've had just nothing but glowing remarks about the city of Greenville, about the amenities that we have here, uh, specifically about the people that have been so friendly and so kind to them, uh, and a lot of them like the food here, too, which I think we can all say that we, we've got some really good food here. But, uh, a lot of glowing remarks, it's been awesome to see, but it puts us on the national and international stage, being able to have teams from throughout the entire globe participating